Clock says it's 5:00 PM, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. Judy's not here yet, but she's in on this, so.
She is. Sorry.
Hayden?
There she is.
Okay. Wanted to bring up the. What were we supposed to talk about, Judy?
The. The odor monitoring.
Yeah, the letter to the. To the planning board. About the use of the odor control. So, does anybody have any problem with that?
I think it's a good use.
Excuse me?
I think it's a good use.
For the, Mary, it's it's use of the. The community impact fee. Proposed to. Help hire a consultant for monitoring odor control.
And I placed this letter in the OneDrive folder for tonight's meeting. So you'd find it there, Mary, if you're looking for it.
Okay, I haven't been back up. I haven't seen it yet. Okay, in OneDrive.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we go ahead and send that to the to the select board.
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Call, call, vote, Sarah?
Yes.
Don, yes. Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Judy, you want to just go ahead and send that, or do you want me to sign it and send it?
Well, I'll I'll send you. Complete version without the draft on it, or unless you. And you can sign it and send it.
All right.
Oh, we should talk about, should we CC the select board? Wouldn't hurt, I don't think.
I thought we were sending this like board.
No, I was sending it to Brian.
Oh, right. Yeah, you're right.
Yes, he's he's a liaison to the committee.
Yeah, I'll see. I'll see. Yeah, CC them.
Okay.
Oh, Brian on the select.
Aaron is on here, and I think you've got some questions about. Putting a solar farm beyond the cemetery on Long Plain Road.
Yes, sir. I'm on with a colleague of mine, Eric.
All right.
Could I could I have your last name, Aaron?
Yes, sorry. My last name is Sims, S-I-M-M-S.
Thank you.
So, what question should it have for us?
So, Don has, you have talked to me several times. I want I wanted Eric to to join so that that you could hear here our view from a different perspective. And Eric has been working with me a lot on this project.
Yeah, you want me to just step in, Aaron?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so I want to give you guys just a sort of quick overview and tell you sort of the advice we've gotten and then sort of hear what you guys had to say, or maybe how you could help us pick a direction moving forward.
Can you explain where the plot is?
Yep.
John Simorowski's product project, our property. Across from the. The. What's the what's the name of across the street? Just beyond the Polish Cemetery.
Just.
Near the Propel Plastics, like near town offices?
Yes, across the street, and it's north of the cemetery. It's sort of bounded by the cemetery, the the train tracks, Long Plain Road, and then there's.
So way down north, north of Christian, got it.
Yep.
What's the zoning there?
It's commercial industrial zoning. And.
Long Plain Road?
It's Long Plain Road, yes. Right near the town line, right near the town, very south part of. Or near Deerfield there on the corner. But it's on the it's on the west side of Long Plain Road.
You come from the north.
So we've been sort of involved talking to John about this property for a couple of years now, working with utility, trying to figure out what the capacity is. We expect the results of the system impact study probably in the next 60 days or so. We got behind a large project that had a large study, so it just delayed everything. And in the interim, you know, we were originally designing under the 50-foot setback rule, and so, you know, last year, the the zoning rules changed. Which make the project. Probably nonviable from an economic perspective, given what we expect the cost to be for interconnection. And it's a little bit of an oddly shaped parcel. There's a wedge on the southwest corner, so when you end up with a 100-foot setback, you end up losing the entire wedge, because by the time you have all the setbacks in this wedge, it's it's just not usable anymore. So we sought out local council just to get some advice on, you know, what do we do here? Do we seek a variance? Do we, what are our options to try to? Live within a setback that's smaller than 100 feet, 100 feet. And given that it's a commercial industrial zone, it's not really a pretty part of town, or a lot of residences sort of thinking it will be a sensitive area. We were wondering, our local council said, you know, getting a variance would be very difficult, and they just don't think our odds are great, you know, they said we'd be perfectly willing to help you try to do that, but we're not feeling great about it. And we said, okay. What about the zoning by law just changed to increase the setback? Did anybody think during that process, or was there any talk about maybe a different rule for commercial industrial zones? And what's the politics in the town, or, you know, would there be an appetite for that? And so we're kind of coming to you folks, just saying. If we're trying to do a project, and what we really need is a, you know, probably a 50-foot setback on maybe the roadside and 20 or 30 feet on the other side. Is there any way to get there? Do you have any advice for us?
Well, I can make a couple of comments. One is that we reduced. The rear. Setback for. Commercial properties in the original bylaw. The other is that. Our select board does not like us to do. Major zoning revisions except an annual town meeting. And that wouldn't be until spring at the best.
Yep. And that timing could work, you know, I mean, these things take a long time to gestate, so it's, that's not out of the question. I don't I don't know for certain, but this is sort of what I want to hear from you, like, how would we approach it? And, I mean, the the zoning setback in the commercial zones, if it's not a solar project, or, you know, 50 feet on the front and 20 on the side, we could, that would be great, but the way I read the zoning reg, that's not the way it is for solar projects. Solar projects are other, and they have to live with 100 feet all the way around. And so if we if we sought a change, that's probably what we would do, we'd probably just seek in the commercial industrial zones to treat solar as though it were a commercial or industrial use, so it lived by the same setback rules.
The other reason for increasing the setback was because of the battery storage, large-scale battery storage and concerns about that. And. I know that that's politically a very sensitive issue.
What about that? Can you just help me understand? Is it is it the size of it? Is the look of it? Is it a fire danger? Sort of what was that coming from, do you know?
Fire explosion, concern about aquifer from leakage. Environment, general environmental damage.
Yeah, because there is a.
And I think a general fear of the fact that. These aren't proven to be safe yet.
Yeah, and there are rules. You're you do have those rules with respect to the increased distance, and if it's a residential district, you have a five.
This abuts.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, did somebody ask a question that I missed?
Guess not.
Okay. In this project, I believe there would be battery storage. It would be on the south end of the project, which is.
Does this this property abuts the gap?
Oh, is that Sarah speaking?
Yeah.
It's across, no, it does not. It's there's a cemetery is is in between.
So one of the things that that Aaron asked a couple of times is that. Could he get? A variance, and I explained that. The. Zoning Board of Appeal appeals very, very rarely gives. Variances, but that they do waive certain requirements, and I would think that where that is, that, you know, going to 50 feet setback. And and having a requirement that the. If if there's battery stores, it it have have a 100-foot setback. That that possibly could be waived, but we don't know, and we can't, there's nothing that we can do at this point, except. Make a change to the to the bylaws, but. You know, it's not something we can answer because we're not responsible, but we do have cases where, in a reasonable situation, the zoning Board of Appeals has waived. Any number of of requirements because they fit in the particular situation.
So how does that work?
Meeting votes very seriously, though.
So how would that work? Would we, so the way I understand it, and I'm sure I don't understand it as well as you do. When we apply for the special permit, then the site plan review goes to you folks. And are you saying that in the site plan review, if we ask for something that was a a smaller setback, or you talk about, you call it kind of a waiver, that's something that you would approve, and then it would just go to the zoning board, and they would either say yea or nay, and it's just sort of up to them to?
No, we may or may not approve it, approve it depending upon what we find, what we hear in the in the public hearing. And then zoning Board of Appeals will may or may not for the same reason.
We have no jurisdiction over over over. Enforcing the bylaws themselves.
Right.
We can waive, we can waive certain ones where it's for the public good, but not ones that. Affect the special permit, I don't think. The CBA trumps us.
Right. That I understand, but you are, are you able to? Sort of prove it on your end for them to decide whether they like it or not, even if it doesn't meet the black and white zoning setback. You see what I'm saying? Or you just not even have that ability to recommend to the zoning board that they at least take a look at it?
I can't remember any circumstance in the 12 years I've been on the planning board that we have ever done that.
Yeah. So I mean, it sounds like, you know, unless our council changes their mind and says, oh, yeah, there's something unique about this where you're going to get a variance. It sounds like trying through the town meeting to warn and seek a change in the bylaws, probably that our best shot of doing it, and doing it as narrowly as possible in the commercial industrial zone. That seem. Seems like the probably the best path. I mean, do you guys have a sense of, I don't know who was involved in changing it last time? Do you have a sense at all of the town, and whether that's? You know, anywhere near a likely scenario or worth the effort, or?
I can't answer that. I. I know the town is. Primarily concerned about preserving agricultural and forest land. But. They also. Have issues with other things, so. You never know.
Well, we only have two commercial industrial. Areas in the town, and both of them are fairly close together, and I. I I think I would be amenable to considering it. Judy?
You can always consider it. I I just have no feel for the politics, which is his question.
Well, is it, this is John Baroness, the landowner. Is it something that the planning board would consider, putting on a warrant for your next special town meeting?
No, we would have to hold a a public hearing before we could do something like that.
Right, a public hearing, and then, you know, you know, most towns have several special town meetings over the course of time.
No, we we would not do it at a special town meeting because. We're under fairly strict instructions to take anything other than a trivial zoning change, or one that's required. For some particular time urgency to wait until annual town meeting, because they were. Waitley doesn't have a quorum requirement for town meetings, and they worry about a small attendance.
And and there have been. People felt that that things have gotten. Sneak through on on the special town meetings, even though that never has been the intent, but, you know, people. Think what they want. And well, it's now. 5:16, so we're gonna have to cut this discussion short. If you want to hang around till the end of the meeting, we could reconvene it because you're not on the agenda.
I really appreciate your time. That was super helpful. One quick, when is the next town meeting? I don't know that back next spring.
The annual town meeting is normally in April, but they've been in June in times of COVID.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Get to your regular agenda. We really appreciate your time.
Okay, I'm I'm now showing as 5:16, so we're gonna open the public hearing. On. What do we call it, DMCA? DMCTC.
DMCTC.
So.
You're supposed to ask if they've paid their bills. Before you can undertake to discuss anything.
I believe we have. I know I paid a bill that came through last week, I think.
I. I would, I didn't have anything, any notification from Lynn about this when I looked earlier today. I don't know what the schedule is.
Well, Lynn is now Amy, and Amy is new, so.
I know I had corresponded with Chris, and he responded to me that he paid it the same day I sent him my email, so.
I think we can take Chris's word.
Appreciate that.
Well, we will be double checking on you.
Very good.
All right, we're gonna give you the floor.
Okay. So I'm Chris Chamberlain, civil engineer with Berkshire Design Group here, representing debilitating medical condition treatment centers, Inc., which for the rest of the meeting will refer to as DMCTC. I'm joined by Jared Glansberger with DMCTC, as well as the company's attorney, Isaac Fleischer from Bacon Wilson. The. The applicant is proposing a marijuana retail location at 424 State Road, Unit B. The portion of that property currently owned by Yankee Candle, and most recently occupied by Yankee Candle's real estate office and state health's medical offices. Do I have the power to share? Looks like I do. So this location, as I think you're all aware, is at the Sugarloaf Shops, the corner of Route 5 and 116. This. Pro, these two parcels that I'm circling here are both part of a condo association at 424 State Road. The property that we're talking about today is this one, which encompasses Unit B, which is the Yankee Candle Building. The other piece of the property, Unit A, is owned by Old State Road LLC, and is, I believe, it's leased to Toro Verde, for, as I think, as we all know, another marijuana retailer. There's also a third unit in the condo, a small storage building, Unit C. The property is in the commercial zone. As we, I'm gonna flip and stop this share and bring up the site plan. Here. So again, here we've identified the building that will house the proposed marijuana establishment, and this is showing the neighbor land with an aerial photo, as well as the properties that the zoning by law requires us to identify as part of our application. Stepping forward. This is the site location. Again, this building here, this plan has rotated 90 degrees from the previous views. And the site plan is, in terms of exterior features of the site, is essentially to remain unchanged. The major renovations will be in the interior for the store. But the existing sort of commercial layout of the site works well for the proposed use, and there are no proposed changes to the parking lot, existing lighting, or anything of that nature. The total size footprint, footprint, square footage of Unit B is about 8,000 square feet, 3,100 square feet, which is, has recently been the Yankee Candle Office Building, will be converted into the marijuana retailer, and the remaining, what is it, 4,900 square feet, will initially be unoccupied. There's a hope to sub, to lease that area to a general office tenant. The property is being purchased by DMCTC for the purposes of constructing this project, and they're currently under an agreement to do that with Yankee Candle, the current landowner.
Chris, which part of the building would be the retail facility?
Oddly enough, that's a question that I didn't ask my client. So Jared, if you could chime in and just point to the portion of the building that we're talking about.
I don't I don't think they can see my mouse, but it's the it's the one on the southern side where you have your mouse right now. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
So flipping back to the location plan, we note that there are. Where'd we go? Oh, sorry. Flipped my wheel there. We know that there are none of the listed prohibited uses within the 500-foot radius of the marijuana establishment, and as per the bylaw, that's measured from the building to the property line of the other use. The closest property that may be conflicting under the bylaw would be this one right here, which at least in recent years was a daycare. But as we can see, it is beyond that 500-foot radius, and even if it were within that radius, there would be the ability to wave that down. So so overall. We don't see any issue with any of those conflicting uses. I'm gonna highlight just a few pieces of the site plan that are critical. And we're gonna start with, as I mentioned, lighting is not proposed to change. Certainly, security is an important feature of any marijuana establishment and retail. Perhaps most of all, the DMCTC is developing a multifaceted security plan. As as you've heard many times before, with these sorts of projects, there'll be infrared cameras, remote monitoring, there will be staff on site when the facility is open and available to report to the site if there's any incident. DMCTC has met with the police chief to review the details of the security plan. Of course, in these public forums, we try to keep the the details limited for confidentiality, for security reasons. But the initial plan has been reviewed with the chief. At that time, there were no comments on it, but certainly the intention is to continue working with the local police department to ensure that the final plan meets their satisfaction. I'll also note that there was a meeting with the fire chief about this site at the same time as the last time I was here, mentioning about Three River Road. And again, the the chief didn't have any specific comments, did want to ensure that there's a Knox box for fire access, but overall, did not at that time express any concerns with the site.
That that, when you just mentioned Three River Road, you were saying the the meeting with the. Fire chief.
Was to cover both of those.
Covered both, okay.
Probably not an important detail here at this presentation, but it's how it's organized in my head. Some other key considerations, you know, in terms of noise, we see the this use similar to other retail and commercial uses that might be expected in this district. The comings and goings of of customers, but as as I think we've become more familiar with these locations as they've opened up. The the security measures ensure that that what's going on inside stays inside, and that that people are really arriving and leaving. And so in terms of some of the other uses nearby, this, I think we would expect this to be less noisy than the typical use in this part of town. Odor control with all these projects is obviously very important. The mechanical system renovations will incorporate odor control, while significantly less than cultivation or even manufacturing. There still is the potential for odor issues, and so it's important that those get built up ahead of time. The, what's important to remember in terms of retail is that, you know, a portion of the project, a portion of the products come in, made from the cannabis oils, which generally don't have a significant amount of odor with them. And then in addition to that, both those products and the flower products are typically sealed in airtight containers from the time they arrive until, or airtight packaging and containers from the time they arrive until they're sold and leave. The. There is a proposal to use an ionizing air purification system, both for the the comfort of employees and customers, and also to ensure that that air is scrubbed before it exits the building. And. You know, DMCTC has operated marijuana establishments before and and is familiar with the odor control mechanisms, and intends to have those as integral parts of the mechanical system as those systems are engineered. Signage on the site, as per the bylaw, would include the allowed one-wall sign and one freestanding sign. There's an existing freestanding sign that's been associated with this building. That is located roughly here.
Excuse me, Chris?
Yes.
Done. My lights are blinking. And. I wondered if you wanted to set a continuation time in case we lose power.
Yeah.
Which happened once.
Okay.
Um. Does anybody on the board have any problem with? Doing this in a couple of days on Thursday or something to continue this, or do we want to go for a week? I just looking for a straw poll at this point.
I'm out of, from Thursday till the following Thursday.
I can do this tomorrow night.
I can do it tomorrow.
I could do it tomorrow.
Okay, well.
I can do it. Okay.
We've got a quorum, so we'll continue if we need to.
No, we can't. It's not time to post.
All right.
Thursday wouldn't be either.
So a week from Friday, Judy?
Yeah.
You'll be back?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be the sixth. Friday, the sixth at 5:00.
I don't have my calendar up.
August, a week from. Just make sure I'm doing this right. So this Friday is the 30th of July, and a week from Friday is 6th of August.
Okay.
I can't do it on Friday.
I could do it on Friday the 6th, I believe.
Okay, well, we will have a quorum then.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we get cut off. It will be continued to the 6:00 to 5:00 PM. Okay, Chris, you're back on. I have one question, though, before you do that.
Please.
I'm not seeing any handicaps parking on the. Site plan.
Hmm. So I believe that. So I believe that it's, you see, I can't. But there are two spaces, I think, on the aerial photo, I've seen that they're not currently marked on the pavement. But these two spaces are at the main entrance to the building with striking between them. Yes.
I think that there is handicap access, right where unit C is, there is like a ramp that goes down from both sides, from the red building and the gray building. And so there's an entrance there with those, with those handicap spaces.
Okay. So that hallway connecting is a way to get into both condominiums?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. All right, continue. Go ahead.
Okay. So again, I think I left off on signage. We're opposing the, the allowed one-wall sign and one freestanding sign, which would identify the retailer and be compliant with, you know, the town bylaws and CCC requirements. And in terms of size and location, similar to the existing signage that was on site before the previous offices moved out. We have prepared a traffic evaluation, looking at the change in traffic versus the most recent use. The, the analysis of traffic for marijuana establishments is in infancy, to say the least. The newest version of the ITE traffic study does include an entry for marijuana retailers. It only has four data points from Colorado and Oregon, and there's not a very good correlation. The, actually, the largest facility that they studied had the smallest traffic generation, which you wouldn't normally expect. So, and beyond that, the range that they gave for trip generation was between 80 and 800 per thousand square feet, based on the, the study that they have. So to me, that suggests that that entry is not reliable data and shouldn't be used. And so instead, we looked at this a couple of different ways, looked for the most similar ITE entry that has robust data, and also looking at market projections from the, from DMCTC, as well as looking at the experience of some of the other retailers as they've opened up. And so the traffic analysis is documented in the application. We are projecting an increase compared to the existing use. And looking at the, the peak hour trips, which is really the, the critical period that we look at for traffic, is we're projecting something on the order of 20 additional trips per hour compared to the previous use, or if, to contextualize that, about one additional trip every three minutes. And so that essentially an average of a three-minute gap between those new trips. And the, and so what that works out to on a daily basis is for both the office building and the marijuana facility put together is a total of about 360 trips per day. And I want to point out that when we talk about trips in traffic, that's one, one arrival or one departure. So if you think about it in terms of number of people, it's, it's about half of that number. And particular to this site, certainly aware that this is a busy area. The circulation for the site has two entrances in this location. And over here, the property is split into two parcels, one and two on the tax maps, but it's all a single condo association. And these parking lots are connected. The parking spaces, of which there are about 87, a majority of them are on the unit B parcel, but our understanding is that those are all shared under the condo association among everyone that's there. And sort of looking at the movements that will come into and out of this site, there are really three directions that, that one may go, north on five, south on five, or toward Amherst on 116. And so certainly, the, the movement north on five from this exit is a right turn. And anyone going south on five could exit via Old State Road with a right turn and then a left at the light. And then, as, as was discussed the last time the site was under review at the planning board, the left onto 116 is difficult at certain times of the day when traffic is heavy. And so it's easy to say all of that qualitatively, but also in the traffic analysis, we did try to look at the site as a whole, under the future condition, where there are two marijuana retailers and potentially other general tenants at the site. And so using those same sort of generation numbers, we looked at what the peak period would provide in terms of generation. And then, and so we came up with a total in the peak hour of the site as a whole of about 100 vehicle trips. Again, that's totaling entering and exiting vehicles. And so if we look at that in terms of the three motions that we're looking at, and with half of those trips being entries, what we're seeing is 16 or so left turns onto 116 in the peak hour for the site as a whole. Or to contextualize that, that would mean one turn every six minutes during that, during that time period. And so the idea that, that there's a six-minute gap on average between that, that really critical motion. Looking at parking, as I mentioned, there are a total of about 87 parking spaces on the site. Once again, the data are sparse as to any kind of studies of how much parking is generated by these facilities. We do know qualitatively that customers are at the facility for relatively short periods of time, 10, 15, perhaps 20 minutes on average. So again, tried to look for different ways to quantify what the different parking demands were going to be. So looking at the site total analysis that we just mentioned, that breaks down to 50 entries and 54 exits during the peak hour. And so even if the dwell time for each of those trips was an entire hour during that peak hour, which I think is unlikely, that's still significantly less than the parking available. Separately from that, looked at ITG, IT generation of parking for some other uses, such as office, general retail, a pharmacy, those are all pretty consistently around a generation of three spaces per thousand square feet of building, which works out to about 48 required for the site as a whole. And we'll note that, that actually, the medical office use is higher than any of those uses by just a little bit that, that was there before. But then, if we, you know, make, make an assumption that a marijuana retailer requires twice that level of parking, and that consumes about half the square footage in these buildings, that still works out to about 72 spaces out of the 87 that are available. And then in terms of parking and traffic, some strategies that have been used in other places where the uncertainty of these businesses moving in are things such as posting a police detail during the open hours at the beginning of the opening, and then at the discretion of the police department, reducing that as necessary, and also scheduling customers in terms of giving them pickup windows in order to manage that demand so that it doesn't necessarily peak all at one time. And those are conditions, at least in the initial period, as we see how the facility operates, that DMCTC would be open to. And then, you know, those are the key items I wanted to highlight. I'm sure there are additional things that we want to discuss. But the other thing that I did want to highlight is that just recently, the town of Whately has put in a grant application seeking planning and economic development grant, so that they can look at changes, trying to drive more businesses to move in to this commercial district. And so just wanted to highlight that, that this is a part of town that I think the, the town is seeking to, to bring more businesses into, and DMCTC I know is hoping to be a part of that. So with that, I think Jared and Isaac and I are happy to take additional questions.
Excuse me, oh, board, I just got back. Is there anything in particular? I know, Chris apparently just finished a list of things. Should I just note that, or?
He did an extensive review of traffic and parking.
Yes.
Much of that is in the site plan, right? Is, is it all there, Chris?
I would say that, that all the facts and figures that I mentioned are definitely in the application.
So you could just refer to the application?
One thing to consider, Chris, is you've got a you're a parking area across the street, too.
Yeah, certainly, that's true. And, you know, we hesitated to start looking at off-site to try to deal with those issues, but, but that's, that's a good point.
Well, one of the things you may want to consider would be to get with the town or maybe the other corporation and provide pedestrian crosswalk there.
Yeah, and, and I know that the state has a project planned, and I'm not sure, I don't remember the details of whether that's being considered or not. But it is state highway, so just creating a crosswalk is, is no easy matter.
Well, the first time somebody gets killed, it is because I saw how quickly they changed the thing at Sunderland by the cliffside. Took them about two weeks. That's just me being cynical.
Fair enough.
What are the hours? Would be the hours of operation?
I think that the exact hours are not determined this time. I know the bylaw restricts us to, I believe it's, I want to say 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I mean, or no?
Eight, I think.
Eight, that sounds right, between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And in any event, we're aware of the bylaw limits on hours. And so the final decision on hours will be within that time period.
How many employees would be on site at once?
I believe the, the total employment, the total employment that I have is 12. And Jared, can you comment on, on the maximum shift size?
Yeah, that's right, Chris, about 12.
Sorry, not total employment, the, the shift size is 12.
So 12 of your parking spaces would go for employees?
Correct. And the, the ITE numbers account for all parking spaces occupied at the time a business is open. So in terms of, again, to the extent that that data is, are useful, it incorporates employees as well as customers.
One problem with this site is that the bylaw requires more spaces per square foot than the site has for the whole complex. It requires, I think if you add up the total square footage, it requires 186, 116 spaces, more than 60. Yeah. 66. 86 for the, for this two buildings and your proposed rental area. No, 86 for the two. It requires 106 spaces and there are only 87. So the, the expected density is, is really important. And I don't know whether that calls for a variance from the CBA or not. It's certainly a, an existing non-conforming fact.
Right.
The Torro Verdi application mentioned that they planned educational conferences, which presumably would have a bigger, bigger number of people than just for the regular shopping and would stay longer. It also said they thought that 75 spaces would be available to them, but that's, that's neither here nor there. So you're not planning any, any conference space or educational space?
The intention is for the remaining space to be leased for general office, not, not for any use like that.
But the business itself is not being planned to give seminars, right?
Uh, no.
And I kind of think that Torro Verdi may do a few, but I have a feeling that they're not going to be highly attended. I think that was a bone that they talked to us.
I do have a question about sort of odor control once the customers leave the premises. So they walk out to their car, it's sort of a general question I've wondered, like, can they just light up in the parking lot? You know, what, what's done to manage that issue? Do your responsibilities end when they walk out the door?
I, I can comment on what I understand of CCC regulations, but I better defer to, to Jared on, on an operational question like that.
I think Isaac was going to answer there, too. So I think he has, he has the letter of the law.
Yeah, I mean, I think my answer is going to be similar to, to Chris's, but I, all, all of the retail establishments in Massachusetts are held to the same standard. There's no, there's no what's called social consumption allowed on site of the retail establishments. So it would, it would be a, it would be a violation of the, of the regs and of the statute to allow customers to, to use the product on, on site. So there's going to be, there's, by, by law, there's going to be security on site, both in terms of employees of the establishment and also cameras. And it would be strictly prohibited for any use of the cannabis product on site.
Okay, so it's prohibited, it's against the regulations, and by law, DMCTC would have some obligation to police that at your own expense versus leaving it to people intent to call the police.
Yes, if it's, if it's on, if it's on site, then, then yeah, it would, it would certainly be covered by DMC's security requirements.
Right. But if they ran across the street over to the parking lot, then it's really out of your jurisdiction.
Yes. And I think if that were an issue, DMC would, would work with the city to figure out a solution. But I, I'd be hesitant to have DMC police outside of its own property.
Understood.
Any other questions, my board? So I think the Torro Verdi traffic control, we'll probably use the same wording as for the condition as we did then.
So I just had a power glitch and Don froze.
Me too.
Our lights went out for a minute also.
Yeah, same here. With a screech. With a screech.
Mr. Slode, question for Toroverde?
Oh, I don't know where Don was going with that.
Don had a question for the board about what a condition could be to address the traffic.
He referenced the one that we put in the Toro Verde site plan acceptance, which was that I have it in front of me, every requirement that every effort be made by Toro Verde to facilitate traffic flow in and out of the facility with detail officers to be assigned to the site as deemed necessary by the Waitley Police Department. I believe at the time, the Waitley Police Department agreed with that.
Yes, and I wanted, am I okay to bring up a a topic on the parking and traffic with the chief of police?
Sure.
Could I please have your name?
William Beats, CEO of Toroverde.
Thank you.
I had met with the chief of police last week, and as of last week, as I I had some concerns over traffic and parking as the board does. And he had said at that time that he hadn't heard from anyone from DMC as of yet from their security plan or their traffic concerns. He hasn't received anything yet. Chris, you had mentioned earlier that you had met with the chief of police, and I'm just confused on that.
Sure, I think Jared's back on. That's one for you.
The question was the chief of police?
Yeah, I had met with the chief of police last week, or maybe about 10 days ago.
Yeah.
We had, I had some concerns over of traffic and parking and to see, you know, if he had the same concerns I did. And he said he hadn't received anything from DMC at that time. So I'm just, and Chris had mentioned that you had mentioned or someone had met with the chief of police. And I, he didn't, so I don't know where we're at. I'm just confused.
So we we met with Chief Savini on our cultivation property here and discussed the cultivation property, the Three River Road project that's coming up next, and this 424 State Road. So that was all done at the same time. And I can provide the the date of that and talk to Chief Savini as well.
So then would the clarification be that there was a conversation with the chief, but that nothing at this point has been submitted to him on paper?
Correct.
So there's been no security plan given for the parking or for traffic for this location?
We switch to digital submissions to the various boards if that has any impact, so the word paper may not be relevant.
Or or digital. I I think what what Chris has said, it, there may have been kind of off record conversation, but no clear conversation with the chief about this location as far as traffic and parking goes as far as a plan, a written plan in place.
Sure, and so what I would say in terms of what's been submitted to the board, I I believe that gets circulated to town departments. But I think in terms of a written statement of involving the police department in that traffic detail, it's I believe that that has not happened.
Okay.
If that answers the question.
It does. That's why I was just confused, because we, you know, the chief and I were trying to, you know, figure out how this was going to work out, and he couldn't really give his opinion until he received something from DMC.
Is Don back with us, or?
It looks like he's not.
And there is no one in the waiting room.
The I think it wasn't one reason it hadn't been mentioned is because this was a condition that the board board applied to you folks, Toro Verde, in the course of our discussions, not one that you brought to us. So so I would assume that.
Yeah, I believe there were two conditions on that approval, one that the police department be satisfied with the security plan, and then a separate one that a detail be provided at opening to be
Yeah.
And then I think, yeah, and and typically, and most of the boards have required a a written confirmation from the police department that they're satisfied with the security plan before construction can proceed. We've seen that in a number of towns.
Yeah, well, we definitely always require a written or a formal affirmation of of approval from both the fire chief and the police chief. And would in this case.
Yeah, I believe we we Toroverde didn't receive an approval until we had those things in place.
Correct.
So Judy, just to clarify for my benefit, looking at the the January 2019 approval letter for Toroverde from the planning board, there is language of receipt by the planning board of letters of approval of the site plan from Waitley safety officials. Are you proposing, Judy, that we reuse that exact language in the conditions of approval for DMCTC at 424 State Road?
I would certainly submit that, but or something similar, that that's certainly the gist of what we would expect.
And then in a similar vein, on the traffic, there was a requirement, as you verbal, as you laid out, this requirement about facilitating traffic flow in and out of the facility. This was specified for Toro Verde. Are you recommending that as we start drafting up conditions for DMCTC that we use that same language?
I started to think that, and then I thought that there probably, in this case, would have to be some requirement to coordinate with Toro Verde in developing this, I mean. So can we just assume that that would happen? I mean, I'm trying to figure out the practicality of this. You have two sites with the same condition. And should there should there be a need, I suspect it would be shared equally. And I'm not quite sure how this is implemented. So so any thoughts anybody has would be helpful.
I I wouldn't speak up for Toroverde that we, our expectations was not to have another dispensary next to us. So to put that back in our plan, we would have to really discuss that, but, you know, we weren't anticipating another dispensary next door.
Well, I I understand, but you you committed to to the condition, irregardless of who was next door.
Right, we can, we're committed to exactly the condition that we agreed on and that you approved, absolutely.
And I I think that
Now, it just kind of with parking spaces being increased, it definitely throws a an obstacle.
And so I I guess I would submit, you know, sort of for the benefit of both sides, is that in terms of what needs to happen, that should be the discretion of the police department to to be deciding on. I think that if if either retailer is beholden to an agreement from the other, that could, that that's
Yeah.
create a lot of problems.
Well, I didn't think it would. I didn't mean to put it in quite those words, but it, I think that's a very good solution.
And I I think, again, the 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 key is that that these folks are going to be funding the police detail, and so that that split, I imagine, is very important to both of them.
Yes, that's what I was getting at. I think leaving it to the police department is an excellent idea.
Sorry, the engineer was blunt there more than you.
So there still needs to be a condition. We cannot go back and change approval site plan review conditions on Toroverde. That's in the past, but we can set conditions on site plan approval for DMCTC, and it seems like the same language can work here. Why can't it? It basically says that that in this case, DMCTC would have to work to facilitate traffic flow in and out of the facility with detail officers to be assigned to the site as deemed necessary by the Waitley Police Department. So it still involves the Waitley Police Department. I don't know that we can can or should force collaboration. Ideally, Toroverde and DMCTC, albeit competitors, would collaborate around this, but being competitors, they may be less inclined to do that, but the Waitley Police Department is a neutral third party, should be working with the two sides to see that the desired outcome is achieved.
Yep.
All right, so what I that, so what I think I'm hearing is that we have if we are sort of leaning, moving towards the absence of our ongoing absence of our chairperson, like the queen of the queen of the ad-hill or queen of the beehive. We're moving towards, are we going to, are we prepared to make a motion relative to approving this or continuing this hearing? What's the sense of the planning board?
Well, first, we ask if there are any more questions from either the board or the public.
And I would also just say, I can assume that that Don will review the recording of everything that he's missed and that the recording is still active.
Yes. Looks like I see Dick raising his hand.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick Evans. Can you hear me?
I'm not the chair, but we do hear you, yes.
Acting chair, thank you. I'm a lawyer in Northampton. I represented Toroverde three years ago when we were before you and the CBA. And they've asked me to to stop in your meeting tonight. The, I just want to make a couple of small points, certainly with regard to collaborating with debilitating in the interest of protecting and promoting the public safety in Waitley. We were, we certainly are willing and able and eager to do that. I think we all share that concern. And with regard to that concern for traffic and public safety, I simply want to ask the board to take a look at that intersection across from the gas station on 116 where Old State Road intersects with 116, which Chris, in his evaluation, described as a challenging intersection, I think, and and commented on shortly. I think three years ago, somebody called it squirrely, and that that term has stuck with me, and it is a squirrely intersection. And so I'm simply asking that the board take that 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 squirrely intersection into close consideration and and consider any measures that may be available to you, certainly involving a consultation with the police chief about what can be done to 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 keep that as safe an intersection as possible. Let me mention one other thing, and that is something that's kind of new to marijuana retail, and that's the question of delivery. I don't think there was anything in the application about whether there will be deliveries made from this site. So I'm suggesting that's something the board may want to take into consideration in your deliberations. Thank you very much.
I think the board can ask follow up questions of speakers at the public hearing. Is that correct?
Can I just quickly respond to one of those issues? As to delivery, I would I would ask that the board does not take into account delivery because it's not part of the the application. I mean, I'm I'm assuming Dick is talking about a home delivery operation, which would be a a separate license and a separate special permit, presumably, when and if Waitley passes ordinances to allow for home delivery. So since that's not a part of the application, I, yeah, I would ask that that's not actually accounted for until such time that it does, it is applied for.
That was going to be my comment. It would would require addition revision to the special permit. And in regard to the traffic, I think it's also important to realize, these are both state highways, and the town has very limited ability to do anything with them.
I remember being out there talking about just this very question, and the highway super said they can't so much as put a stop sign there if they want to because of the the state right of way.
Well, maybe we should find out if there's anyone else from the public that wishes to speak.
Does the board have any more questions?
It looks like John Bonavita would like to speak, but you're on mute.
There we go. Thank you. The, my name is John Bonavita, and I own the property on the north side that is under lease to Toroverde. I I I hear a lot of comments tonight about their parking, our parking. This is a condominium association. The only thing owned here are the are the buildings and the square footage inside the buildings. The rest of the area, the greenery, the parking, the turnaround behind the buildings, is owned in common between Yankee Candle and my group, who's owned the property about five more years than Yankee Candle has. We both bought it from the original developer. I heard talk this evening about we have 87 total spaces, and Chris mentioned that in a peak time, his store may need 72 spaces. That's pretty incredible when you think that we probably need 72 spaces also. We've heard talk about about 12 employees for their store, and that means we'll have 12 employees at our store. And I think that this is all 424 State Road. It's not two separate pieces of property. And I think if we don't, if we don't address that, as as Bill mentioned earlier, I'm not, I'm not so sure that Toroverde or we would have been interested if there was a pot store, cannabis store, next door to ours. And to have Toroverde come down the road in the, you know, I I realize that the monetary concerns aren't aren't really addressed by this board, but in reality, we have Toroverde here in to a point of almost $2 million investment, getting ready to open in the fall. And and here we are. And I think the, I think the parking has got to be addressed at some point.
And so can I just clarify something that's very important? Is what John just said. That number 72 is for both buildings being occupied by separate marijuana retailers and with a projection of double the parking demand than what data was available to try to make that analysis. So that 72 is meant to represent my estimate of a sort of worst case accounting for occupancy by marijuana retailers and additional office space. And again, it's entirely fair to to quibble with whether those data are correct, because there isn't a lot to to go on, but I just do want to clarify exactly what I was representing there.
If I may, I'm not, I'm really not here to debate the information, but I've heard from 80 to 800 trips Chris say that the, you know, that the data is is all over the lot, and I I certainly understand that. But one thing I do realize for sure is that this is not going to be a neighborhood cannabis store. If you're going to come to this cannabis store, you're going to drive to it. And so so I'm sure that the data that's been achieved is on the lower end of it, the 80, certainly. No one's, no one less than 1% of the customers coming into this plaza are going to walk there. So I think we have to deal with the higher traffic count. We have to deal with the higher parking requirements.
Just somebody, please remind me the total number of parking spaces on this site.
87.
87 is total, and John, Mr. Bonavita, you were saying that ne- neither Unit A nor Unit B has some exclusive claim to a subset of those parks. They're just basically held in common. They're just basically held in common, and people can park in any space and go to either unit. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct, as is the handicapped parking and, and the handicap ramp that you'll see undercover, under the, under, under the shakes that connect the two buildings together. So the handicap access for both buildings is in the same location.
One thing that I think might have bearing here is that if, if the remaining space in Unit D is rented to a office use, peak hours would not coincide necessarily with the peak retail hours, especially on weekends and likely during the week. And one thing we could do is condition, condition the site plan approval that the rent will not be to another retail client.
One thing I'd mention, I'd like to mention also, if I may, I forget who it was. The board members had mentioned earlier that if we were going to be holding seminars, we wouldn't anticipate there'd be a high volume.
You're going to call me back.
I would, I would go against that, that we're, part of our pot impact plan is holding seminars and educational programs who have a high volume of people that come through our store. So I just wanted to kind of revisit that from earlier.
If I remember your site plan application correctly, you had.
As a whole be doing, even though we're just applying to be on half of it, that it's important to understand the context of the site as a whole in, in order to make the decision. So I apologize if I've muddied that, you know, the, the site as a whole versus what the DM CTC project will be generating, but I did think that that was important.
Well, I would like to propose that we discuss a condition that DM CTC not rent the remaining space to another retailer. Because I think that exacerbates the peak period process problem. And I don't think it conflicts with their proposal.
Can I just clarify, is, is that any kind of retailer or marijuana retailer?
Any kind of retailer. I'm, I'm trying to avoid evening and weekend peak usage.
And I think one of the problems that we've got here is that we've all looked at the problem in Northampton. But doing a visual casual drive-by of other marijuana establishments, it's a real anomaly. And the problem is that we've got people coming up from Connecticut, which is going to start slowing down, but not in a year, till a year. But nobody else has got even 10% of what's going on in Northampton. The, the, the rise place over in, in Amherst, I've never seen more than 10 or 12 cars in there. The place in Greenfield, a dozen maybe once in a while. But I'm just not seeing the numbers anyplace else.
Well, we don't have the students back at full strength yet, which will make a difference.
Same situation. Well, we're quite as many students, but.
You know, I, I would say to that, that most of the students are under 21, so they shouldn't be parked in these dispensaries.
You forget the size of the graduate department.
Oh, that's fair. Okay. Yeah, you got me on that one then.
But there's another, there's a couple of others that are, I think, over on Route 9 now, so.
Yeah. So you don't think that condition is necessary, Don?
I, I think we'd be stepping beyond our bounds to require them not to.
Well, no, parking, parking is, parking and traffic are definitely our bounds.
Right, but.
ZBAA normally delegates. I don't know about the, the difference between what's required under the bylaw and what, what's there. But, but the actual estimate of traffic flow is something that the ZBAA routinely delegates to us.
I, I guess I would also add that those uses you're talking about, retail in particular, is already a special permit required, even in the commercial zone.
Okay.
I think if we wanted to, felt we needed to put that condition on, it would have to tie into actual parking usage. And that would have to be historical, and I don't think you're probably looking at adding somebody in, in the, in the near future, or what, what's the plan for that? As soon as possible.
Jared, I think that's for you.
And the question is, how soon would we be looking to bring in co-tenants in our, in our side of it?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we would be looking out to see who would make a complimentary tenant with us in the building. So there's, you know, there's no set deadline, but we would, you know, soon after we take ownership, begin to put feelers out to see what tenants would make sense for us as, as co-tenants.
What I think I'm hearing in the spirit of Judy's remarks, which I generally support, is that we would, we would desire that when DM CTC takes on a tenant, there is, there's an additional traffic analysis, and they take on that tenant cognizant of not dramatically exacerbating existing parking challenges. I might be less supportive of a condition that says, you know, not another retail, but a condition along the lines of something associated with impact on parking.
And so I guess, Brent, I would suggest that your zoning bylaw already does that because in the commercial zone, a professional and business office is allowed by right with no review, but a retail establishment would be required to get a special permit. And that would require a site plan review, which would also require that traffic analysis.
Okay.
So if DM CTC rents to an office tenant, it's much, it's going to be a much easier process to get them in, and so that becomes more desirable for them in the first place.
That works for me.
One thing I'd like to add is that Toro Verde also has 4,000 additional square feet that is not part of the dispensary, that we are talking to a couple of other renters to come in there, which will create more traffic. One is a restaurant, and one is actually the Chamber of Commerce, which will have in and out of traffic, you know, throughout the day. So I just want to make sure that's in, you know, in your decision as well, as more, you know, spaces are needed.
It didn't help your situation very much for me.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I didn't get that.
I would, I would just like to, I don't know if we're still discussing a, a condition on, on what kind of use that the remaining space can, is allowable. But, you know, of course, if it were retail, it would be another special permit process where the planning board would have an opportunity to review the traffic situation anew, hopefully with actual data from actual use at that point. But also, I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure that the special permit for the marijuana retail can include a limitation on use of the rest of the, the rest of the building. I, I think that would go beyond a traffic regulation, and that, that would really be a, a direct limitation on, on use that goes beyond what's in the zoning bylaws.
Do restaurants require a special permit as well?
They do, yes. I happen to have it open right now. I didn't just know that.
I thought they did, but I don't have it open either.
Yes. So, so a restaurant would be allowed at this location by special permit?
Well, I withdraw the suggestion for the condition.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay.
Maybe I'm going to ask this question. This is not a question to, to the applicant. I'm hearing that, in some sense, and maybe I'm listening between the lines here, that Toro Verde, Toro Verde would, would encourage the planning board to deny this site plan on the basis of concerns about parking because there's something about this particular use that would create unusual parking challenges compared to others. And I guess my question to the planning board is, how do we, do we, do we, how do we address that? And I actually don't know the answer there. Do we go ahead and vote to approve? Do we do a, do a straw poll? Right now, I mean.
We have no authority, we have no ability to deny. We can condition, but we can't deny.
So even if we did say that there was the parking, we could, we could not approve because of concerns about parking.
I think our, our recourse would be to probably to write to the ZBAA and say that we felt it was a concern and that they should take that into account in approving and granting a special permit. If, if we felt strongly enough that that was an issue.
Okay. And that was purely informational. Don't interpret this as my making that recommendation.
The thing that has me the most concerned is that we won't have any real information on the density of parking until it's been, both places have been open for a couple of weeks at least, or perhaps a month. I mean, I watched the, the cops sit there at, on Route, Route 116 and just waste his whole day for a whole month in Amherst.
So you're, you're, are you more concerned that this is going to be a non-problem, or that's what I'm hearing?
What, what does that imply for the way we treat this, Don?
So I got a lot of, what was the question, Judy?
Your comment is a valid one, but I'm not sure how it affects our going forward.
We need to.
We don't know what's going to happen. That's, and, and to assume the very worst is, in some ways, a good idea, but because we've got two marijuana establishments in here. I, I'm just kind of floundering here.
Yeah. We need to continue this hearing. We're about six minutes away from the floodplain review.
And we have another special hearing.
That's right.
I don't think we're, I, I don't sense that we're necessarily opposed to this application. Am I wrong?
I am not opposed. I am not opposed. And I'm taking somewhat. Taking. On face value what Chris has presented in terms of their parking analysis, which. Give me reason to believe unless strongly disputed by another party that there's going to be sufficient parking to make this work.
If if that's. If if there are no other extra comments, I suggest we close the public hearing and continue our discussion among our. And I think we're pretty close to a resolution, so I. Would not suggest continuing, but it's it's.
Yeah, before you do that, just a procedural question. If you were to vote tonight, can Don vote because he missed a portion of the hearing? I just want to make sure that. We do everything properly.
Could you hear it all, Don?
No, I completely lost it for a while.
Okay, so I think you can't vote.
But we have a quorum for the four that.
I bring a point up. Are, can we, on your condition, we talked about earlier as far as sitting down with the police chief. And going over what he believes that would be a good resolution. Are we still going down that path? As a condition or? No.
We are, we aren't. We haven't discussed formally what the conditions are, but I didn't sense that we were moving and. Requiring anybody to sit down with anybody.
I'll just say to Judy and to, I'm sorry, I just made your Billy. And I'm sorry, Billy, I'm just going off of your name in Zoom. I would normally use your last name if I could. See it, so apologies, no disrespect is meant. So to Judy, I would say I was thinking that we were, as far as conditions on DMCTC, we were leaning towards. Of course, receipt by the planning board of letters of approval of the site plan from weightily safety officials. And however that gets done, whether that's sitting down or however, is. That's not our ours our concern.
No, but he's representing Toraverty.
Yeah.
So. Our agreement was originally that they work with the police and. Bring in traffic control as needed. And I don't think it was required, it was just common sense.
Well, it's required that they bring it in as needed.
It was required.
But it wasn't required that they be there every day for eight hours.
No, it's. But it's.
And I I remember we discussed for a long time at that meeting, the text, and I believe it was settled on. At the discretion of the police department, so that they would be.
As as deemed necessary, yeah. And I think we talked about approving, I just didn't want to say we were going to approve that precise language, Brent, until. Until we did.
Sure.
I don't.
Have we, the planning board, have we, the planning board concluded there are enough. Parking spaces to satisfy the needs of both operations? Plus potentially a third operation coming in from Toraverty?
There will be a third.
There will be a third.
Yeah, we have, we made four thousand extra square feet to have a tenant next to us.
So are, has the bit planning boards saying we've concluded there's enough parking spaces there, and then my question is. What is the responsibility slash liability of the planning board? In potentially contributing to a situation where we exceed the capacity?
Tom, I think the answer that if they try to put in a retail. Establishment, they will have to get a special permit, and the special permit issuers can can deny if they don't feel there's. Sufficient parking. And if they put in an office space, then it. Maybe a problem, but probably. It could be a problem, but. It it definitely would. It wouldn't be definitely a problem.
So why doesn't that apply to the two operations that are going on right now, the exact same principle that you just stated, Don? Why doesn't that apply to these two? Existing things where. It sounds like we're not certain there's enough park.
Well.
I think I think the numbers that Chris presented would show that there's enough parking. Unless it's another retail client.
So, yeah, and all I analyzed was the the sort of office by right use in that location. So again, we could go through and analyze the worst possible special permit use in both locations. And then it would probably exceed what's available, but. In terms of these two establishments, one that's been permitted, one that is seeking a permit. And then the remaining space being filled in by a by right use. In a, what I believe is a pretty conservative analysis showed that that we were. Below the capacity of the site. What I'll say.
What was the hundred and six spaces that were talked about earlier in the meeting?
Technically, for the. Way the zoning bylaw. Is written, there should be. A hundred and fifty, one, one space for every hundred and fifty square feet. And that was a calculation of your. Five thousand square feet. I'm I'm sorry, your your. Toraverty's five thousand, I think, right? Plus.
Total of eight thousand, but there's, we separated five thousand and it's forty five hundred, thirty five hundred now.
Okay, well, that counted your five thousand plus. The three thousand for DMCTC's retail facility. Plus another. Three thousand for. For.
The remaining space.
The remaining, another, another thirty three for the remaining space. So. Your your additional. So that adds up to what eighty six, but then your additional four thousand would bring it up. To over a hundred.
So in the current state of the parking lot today, with everything we're talking about, we would be, oh, we're under on spaces.
Yeah, the the site was constructed originally with fewer parking spaces than the zoning bylaw requires. Which I I imagine the planning board was. Had permission to waive at the time. I I don't know the history.
It might have preceded the zoning, I don't know.
Oh, that could be.
So the site, the site does not have enough parking spaces for all of the. All of the area to be. Compliant with with the with the current zoning, whether that's an issue or not, is probably the ZB A's. That would be the ZB A's authority, I would think. But I don't think that. The two, the two retail facilities would not exceed and. Two retail facilities plus the. The other approved, proposed DMCTC facility would not exceed, but if you get to a. If. If you get to another. Facility, it would exceed, so maybe this is something that the, maybe this is something we should point out to the, to the ZB A. And maybe we should continue till after they they discuss it.
In effect, by making that decision, are we telling Toraverty? Don't come back to us for for a site plan review for a retail operation. So de facto, we're making that decision now also.
I would think adding another retail. Operation of the size of the either of the available remaining spaces would be very difficult.
And if if I could just put a point out, when we develop our location. We we don't have that condition that was already approved. So I'd hate for a condition to come against us because another dispensary is coming next to us.
I'm not sure what condition you're referring to.
If we weren't allowed to have a retail or another. Establishment next to us because there, you know, is another.
That's that's been withdrawn, Billy.
Okay, I I thought Tom just brought that up.
No, what would happen would be, if you wanted to bring a retail space in, they would have to go through the ZB A, and they would make the decision. And they would probably deny it because if it turns out at that point that their. Their parking lot is already full. They would. I can't say what they would say, but. They would be the ones that would make that that decision. We can't make that. That decision at all.
But it's already exceeded, like, I I it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's already exceeded at this point now. With where we're at.
Now, so. No, I I think that what's important to stay focused on is that. There's, there's already a marijuana retail establishment permitted there, as Toraverty, and now. DMC is coming along and applying. For a permit for a second marijuana retail establishment. And there there is sufficient parking, both by the zoning bylaw. And by the traffic report for, to permit both of those uses. I I think it's helpful to take into consideration that there is more available space. On the, on the parcels, and there could potentially be other uses in the future. But I I don't think that when, for instance, Toraverty came for their permit. They did a traffic report. Based on every possible potential future use of both parcels. They were reviewed for their use, and I think that it makes sense for DMC to be reviewed for their use. Plus the existing permitting use, which is Toraverty. But but there's plenty of parking for those uses.
But there is not enough parking for any more. Retail establishment, only for office space.
I I.
And I'll say, I haven't actually analyzed that. I I couldn't tell you right now.
That would depend on the type of retail and the traffic analysis done at that point and. And the special permit application.
Right. I misspoke a bit.
Yeah, so retailer that sold fruitcakes that only had one customer per week would not be a problem.
If it's helpful, there is a method of analyzing parking. Sorry, Billy.
Oh, no, I was just saying, you know, in comparison to fruitcake, fruitcake stand, I'm saying a restaurant goes in there. Obviously, it'd be a high volume of traffic.
And that probably wouldn't fly.
Which I, and and you know, when we went for our. Permit in in our location here, you know, we had big plans and, you know, we have. Close to two million dollars invested into this location. And now we're to the point where we knew we were going to have other neighbors, but we didn't know that it would. Limit us to who we would have as our tenant, and now we're seeing that. It's a possibility that this could limit us. Because it's, you know, another high volume retail space can be occupied.
Like a possibility.
The first one is that that there is a method of parking analysis to look at dissimilar uses. That have different traffic patterns called shared parking, and so it's it's not as simple as the peak of A. Plus the peak of B is the peak, that that you've got to look at the the time characteristics of those, so so it's a little more complicated, which could be done. But regardless, you know, sort of the flip side of it is that. If their restaurant use had come first, it may have precluded anything else from going into building B that's not by right. And and that would have been fair also against Jared's project. He may not have been able to bring in. This retailer, if there were two special permit uses with high parking demands in building A.
I think we have to, that's a good way of saying, I think we have to stick to the existing application and its implications. And I suggest since it's already quarter seven and we.
Judy, why don't you move it? Instead of suggesting, why don't you make a motion?
Okay, well, I'm not, we need to close the public hearing.
Is that a motion?
Got moved, okay, I'm moved, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote, Sarah?
Yes, close.
Yes, Tom?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is. We're gonna close it, right? Okay, thank you for all your input.
Well, now what? Do we discuss? Do we vote, or do we? Continue?
I think we need some guidance on this. Or at least discussion with the ZB A. And possibly counsel.
I.
We're back, we're backing into a situation here. Without knowing the the full impact of of that decision.
Okay, well, if we're bringing in other opinions, I think we shouldn't have closed the public hearing, so. If we're bringing in additional information, I don't disagree with your point, but. So maybe we need to. Undo that vote and continue the hearing.
I I don't think so, because if we. Try to get the ZB A to come in and and say, yes, they would do this, or no, they won't do that, we're not going to get any answer from them. They they will not. Presume that. Anything about any kind of decision they would make. Roger a lot about that and. He won't, he won't wink at you. So is there any other?
Well, I heard Tom say town council. I heard Tom say town council.
I'll just say I'm prepared to move to a vote and establish the conditions. I don't feel I need to continue this. Or seek other.
Tom, do you feel that? Strongly that we should bring in town council?
Yeah, I I I just worry we're back, we're we're making one decision and denying an application that hasn't even come before us yet. In terms of what what that application could be. Well, if you, if you, if they, if it exceeds, if the application exceeds the parking capacity. You've de facto denied their application on this date for some action that will occur in the future. And I just don't have enough information. I I personally don't have enough information to navigate that at this point and and. And make a vote that I can say I understand exactly what the implications of my vote are.
If if you turn that around, though, Tom, you're saying effectively. That we would be denying. This application on the basis of a hypothetical other application that doesn't exist yet. And I'm not sure we can do that either. I mean, I I think we have to look at at. Each one as it comes.
Right now, we're we're talking about two establishments and two possible other ones. And what those other ones will be will have to be decided by the ZB A and. Based a lot on the traffic flow. If we end up not having the full parking lot and the history of. A year or so, or whatever. Time period goes by, that it's not being filled, then they could probably. Approve or disapprove. A retail establishment. Based on new traffic counts and so forth. So I I am am not too concerned about involving town council on this, but I will go along with. With the preference of the rest of the board.
And I'm, again, comfortable with moving ahead without, I feel like we we know enough information. This is the nature. Of businesses in general, they decide what where the, what, where they're going. of businesses in general. They decide what where the what, where they're going to move into based on analyzing the facts on the ground as they know them at the time versus any number of open hypotheticals. So I don't feel strongly that I we need any additional advice.
Sarah?
I think we need to look at case by case and that's where we are. We're looking at this one. So we can move forward is where I am.
So.
Me too.
Okay, so do we have any conditions that we feel we need to discuss? Or are we ready for vote? I feel ready for vote, but I'm.
Okay.
Well, I do believe there are. So I wanna just again ask the question. I think that there was uh a a condition that we may import from the Tor- Toravertay case that just has to do with the safety plan. So when the Toravertay case, we set a condition or the the board of January 2019 set a condition for receipt by the planning board of letters of approval of this site plan from weightily safety officials. It didn't have to do with traffic, that just had had to do with their safety and security plan. That was, so I'm.
That includes traffic. The police would include traffic.
Okay, but then there was a second condition that we would, we might consider importing from toward the Toravertay case. The second one being a requirement that every effort be made by, in this case, DMCTC to facilitate traffic flow in and out of the facility with detail officers to be assigned to the site as deemed necessary by the weightily police department. I'm happy to put these this proposed text in the chat window so people don't have to just.
Well, I have it in front of me. I don't know about.
Right, right. So I'm, I don't know that everyone has that same benefit.
I think Tom is the only one that wouldn't have that because the rest of us were here.
Well, I was not here. Um, oh, sorry, can I just botch that a little bit? I can't quite edit it.
Right, you weren't on here, but you have it now.
I do have it now, but this is really for the benefit of the applicant.
Okay.
So they can see the language and I'm gonna just edit out toward verdict and see. I think I got that right.
Doing that, I will move that we adopt those two conditions.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Call for us, roll call vote, Sarah?
Yes.
What is the vote on?
Um, to adapt those two conditions.
So I put them Tom in the chat window numbered one and two in the Zoom chat. So the first one addresses DMCTC providing letters to us regarding confirming that their site safety plan's been reviewed and approved. And the second one has to do with traffic management. Chris, you're able to see the chat? That that's a separate vote from.
You can't see the chat.
Approve the site plan.
All right.
Yeah, I can't see the chat. I was debating whether to ask whether that needs to be public if you're talking about it.
Oh, wait. Oh, you know, I'm sorry, for some reason. Oh, the host is not allowing me to chat with everyone. So Sarah, I was only chatting with you. Apologies, this is a little.
I could see them fine. It was fine with me.
Yeah, if you could, under the security button, give participants the right to chat.
Thank you for the guidance there. Whoops, not share screen.
And then I I've, no wonder you had that perplexed look, everybody. Right now it says my chat is disabled. So so the motion that we were voting for to approve or disapprove.
Here we go.
I move that we adopt those two conditions for this as part of the site plan review acceptance. And I think the next step, the next step would be to vote approval with those conditions.
Do we have any other conditions? We didn't discuss any.
I feel comfortable with what we got.
Those are my main concerns for that property.
We're about the left turns coming out of that road.
It's a state road. If there starts to be problems, the state's gonna step in.
I'm just teasing.
I know. I had to come to terms with that one. That's a really tough one for me.
Um, have you had a chance to read that, Tom?
Yes.
Are you prepared to vote?
For in favor of the conditions, yes.
Okay, so Sarah's already voted for, I've already voted for Tom?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Judy?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
So we voted for those conditions. Is that the same as voting?
Now I vote that we approve the site plan application subject to those conditions.
Thank you, Judy. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Another roll call vote, Sarah?
I approve the site plan with these conditions.
Don, yes, Tom?
You can't vote, John.
Oh, Don abstained. Tom?
Um, well, based on the points I raised before, I wrote against it.
Okay.
Brad?
I vote for approval with these conditions.
Judy?
For.
Okay, the motion passes by um majority vote. So I thank the audience and the participants very much for the discussion. And uh, because we gotta move to Peggy right now, right?
No, we have the, I don't know, with DM. Chris, would you be willing to hold yours after Peggy's for discussion since there are guests?
Yeah, I have no objection to that as long as Jared and Isaac are okay with it.
And me.
I'm me as well.
So this is gonna, we're gonna go on for a while, which is fine. I'm just what's our schedule for tonight's meeting now? Just time wise?
Well, then we go to Peggy and then back to DMCTC.
Okay, so there'll be a second public hearing for DMCTC, is that correct? For Three River Road?
Three River Road, right.
Okay, and how much time are we allocating for Peggy?
I I don't think it's very long. We're just gonna discuss what's going on so far, right, Peggy?
Okay. I don't know, 15, 20 minutes? It all depends on how many questions you have.
Okay, so um has everybody got a chance to get Peggy's rewrite on this? Take a look at it?
Yes.
So one of the things that I'm thinking that we need to do is um, I need to, I've got a flood plan um map made. I just need to get permissions to upload it. Um, and then the three boards that that would possibly come in to have to make a decision on this would be the planning board, the zoning board of appeals um and uh the conservation commission as well as as um the um permitting authority. Um, and just my plan is that once the flood plane map is up, we just let everybody know that they need to take, if anything that comes in, they need to take a look at the flood plan see if there's any possibility that um their project would be within that. And at that point, uh contact either the conservation commission or me to give them guidance because I've already talked to Scott. And um I think that's the way that we need to sort of do an oversight on this. Is that about right, Peggy?
Yeah, I um I added Don in the underneath the designation of the community floodplain administrator. Um, coordination with other local departments and municipal officials. And so in there it lists the building inspector, the highway department, the planning board, the ZBA and the conservation commission.
Okay, well, I had forgotten about the highway department, so.
Yeah, so I think we just need to create um either a new section in the zoning um with what the application requirements are because right now it's silent, this bylaw is silent. And so for example, in your site plan review um or insight plan review sections, you often see, you know, what the application materials need to cover and what information needs to be provided. So we can either add it in the zoning or if the conservation commission prefers, since they seem to be taking the lead with this review, if we just want to reference that you know, that they have to go and fill out an application with the conservation commission. But either way, we need, it needs to be specified what the information is to allow this review to occur.
So so that would indicate that we should touch base with Scott and see what his preference is, I would think.
I I would think I did send the second draft to Scott and you'll see in under, you know, G review by the conservation commission that there's a note that says either create an application form which could then be, you know, with the conservation commission and they could adopt adjusted as needed, maybe over time if there was some additional information they needed. Um, they'd have that flexibility. Um, or we can actually load in the application requirements into this bylaw, but then, you know, if there's any changes, it's a zoning bylaw amendment.
Yeah.
So just, you know, it's um, since this is a new area. It seems like maybe it would be better to reference a conservation commission application.
I would think so. Um.
And then there's also a checklist that the state wants about all the different possible permits that it could happen in a floodplain. And so uh Kimberly's reaching out to the state to find out if they've already developed a checklist, but if they haven't, then we'll try and prepare a checklist. And obviously, town council will need to review that as well as this zoning bylaw. Since, you know, the state hasn't provided complete guidance on all the sections, so.
Well, it's probably a good idea. My initial thought was that if we see anything in there, then we sort of hand it off to to Scott basically, or for me to take a look at it. And I think it should go to CC that we handed there, but uh maybe the checklist. It puts more onus on the on the other authorities. That.
I don't think we have a choice, Don. It's required.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the one other note that you'll see in in the second draft is that we need to add the floodplain administrator to the distribution list for special permits and site plan review to make sure that he's or she is in the loop. Um, since they have the responsibility potentially for enforcement. So you remember the other section that hadn't been filled out was what the local enforcement process was. So
Yeah.
Basically, I've suggested some language that it would be the floodplain administrator that would be responsible for issuing a letter of noncompliance to the property owner if there was any uh problems with the development in the floodplain overlay district and identify what that noncompliant development was and and have instructions for how to remedy the situation. So clearly, the floodplain administrator now needs to be pulled into the loop of different permit permitting activities um related to the floodplain overlay district.
Okay, so that means amendments not just to the zoning, to the floodplain bylaw, but to the site plan review distribution list.
I think so.
Okay.
Is the is the site plan review, is the distribution list in the zoning bylaw or is?
Yeah, and it was just amended, so.
Okay.
But I think that's, we can do that as part of this without any trouble.
And the special permit, when I looked at it, it looked like the special permit section was a lot more streamlined. So maybe the ZBA has their own special permit application. So they would just need to add the floodplain administrator in there.
I don't remember what it looks like. It's online, I think, so.
The the, we just, we just redid that too, but there's, we'll find room to stick that in there.
Okay.
So do you think we are at a point where we could start thinking about a public hearing for this or or we should regroup a little bit first?
I think it would be really good to get town council's input.
Okay.
Since we don't, I don't have any other examples of zoning of the new zoning bylaws going through the AG's office. So I think before we went to a public hearing, it would be good to have town council review it. Um, assuming you all are comfortable with the changes that are highlighted that I did.
I thought they were great since they put all the work on Scott.
And the new floodplain administrator.
Yes. You did have one comment about whether we should consolidate the definitions of structure and and my preference would be to leave them separate.
Okay, and that's something where, you know, once again, town council.
Yeah.
Be helpful to have their guidance.
Yeah. So the next steps are to send this to town council and to talk to Scott and make sure he's okay with.
Yeah, to make the change with the changes.
Yeah.
And uh Scott and Brian and I had met to go over and it seemed that the conservation commission was willing to take on this additional responsibility.
He didn't even really think it was that much additional work because it
Right.
almost always hit anyway.
Yeah, because they're already regulating any, most activities in a floodplain district in in effect. So this would add a few things, but hopefully wouldn't be a lot of additional work for the conservation commission. And as you can see, it's a review process. It's not a permit process. So that's another thing that state said, oh, well, it could be a review process, but now it would be good to have town council weigh in on that.
Okay.
Wasn't clear in their model bylaw.
Um, wasn't there something about it could be reviewed, it could be a permit?
Yeah, the 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 model bylaw initially called for a permit.
Right.
And so we questioned them, like, what kind of permit? A special permit, you know? And they basically said, you know, we can't recommend any specific process, but it it could be a review process. And so it wasn't in their model bylaw, but that was the guidance that they gave us, that they just want to make sure that there's a review. So, you know, once again, this is another area where having town council's input um would would be very helpful so that they can look at the model from the state. We can send the additional information that um the folks at the state that are working on this model bylaw um provided about it could be a review process and then compare that to the language that I I've drafted to have the conservation mission review it and to have the local enforcement um be conducted by the floodplain administrator.
Would you be willing to draft, to send an email with a list of the issues you think it would be especially helpful to have town council address?
Yes, I can do that. I also should have put second draft up on top, just make sure everybody's
Yeah.
Clear which draft they are, so I'll I'll add that in the.
Brad labeled it as second draft when he put it in our folder for us.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Okay, I'll I'll do that. It probably won't be till next week, but I think you're ahead of most other towns, so.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Night, everybody.
Hi.
Good night.
Peggy.
Bye.
Okay, Chris, back to Toravertay.
No, no, no.
Round two of the DMCTC show.
Round two of the DNCTC show.
I want to, I want to go to Three River, that's what I really want.
Very good. So last we were here, we presented the site plan, which I'll pull up in a moment, although I may need to be the, a co-host again to do that. Oh, it seemed to have the power, so let's.
I don't think I changed anything.
I didn't see it listed on the participants, but it still works, so that's good. Okay, so last we were here, we were looking at Three River Road and the proposed marijuana manufacturing facility, which is not allowed under zoning, but we are proposing to the ZBA that they allow us to convert an existing nonconforming use of a small engine repair shop into marijuana manufacturing. You know, ZBA's primary concern is, is for us to show that, in fact, the business that's there today was legally established under zoning, which I think we assumed that it was, but, but needed to show that. We've got some information from old building permits and that sort of thing, showing that it seems to be the case, but that's more of a ZBA question. Also, which discussion was had around the sort of front area of the building, and in particular, being very careful about the exit movement of traffic on, on this quickly traveled stretch of road. And and then, I think, finally, there were, not finally, there's also the, the Hatfield question. As, and then, we wanted, we were asked to submit additional information on odor control, so let me take these, start to check these off. So we did submit some information on odor control, which was substantially the same as what was proposed over at Seven River Road, that there'd be sort of high throughput carbon filtration units within the building to scrub the air before it's ventilated through the HVAC system. We provided detail on that, and also, you know, a, and, and in writing explanation of what management is going to do to ensure that those are maintained and functioning optimally. You also recall there was discussion about this portion of the existing building here, which is the, the very front part close to River Road, sort of a lean-to structure with a porch in front of it. This extends into the front yard setback in the existing condition. Initially, we intended to leave the building sort of as is, but have explored a little bit more closely, and actually, there's two sections of the building, this being one of them, and a second lean-to structure right here, that are not particularly valuable and also easy to demolish. So the proposal has been changed to demolish those ports of the building, which creates a conformance, which is great, and it also does really improve access and circulation, and pulls the whole site a little bit further from the road, so those, those are all very good things. And so the layout that you see, I'm going to highlight sort of the changes. And I realize the, the parking striping is not showing up particularly well on this, but we continue to have our parking lot, as well as some of the storage of those refrigeration units on the south side of the building, as we did before. But originally, we had proposed to maintain the existing driveway curb cut in this location. But instead, what, what the new plan proposes is for the main driveway for the facility to be located here, which allows most employees and the few visitors that arrive to come straight in, park, and then exit straight out. And also, as the, any delivery traffic, truck traffic, and for moving those container units, it allows those vehicles, again, to exit with a straight-out motion to make sure that those sightlines are maintained either direction. We also looked at the sightlines, even based on a 55 mile an hour design speed, it's signed for 45. We have sufficient sight distance in both directions based on the ASHTO design guidance. That said, we did look at the site logistics of accessing this portion of the site, and in particular, that once a year, when these refrigerated containers would come over Seven River Road, and it was still desirable to have access on this side, because a motion up through the site like this would be challenging. So as we discussed informally last time, we've now formalized as a proposal is to have what is technically a second driveway cut, but the proposal is to really de-emphasize this as a point of access through material. We're going to use that permeable aggregate instead of asphalt. By width, this is a 15-foot-wide driveway versus the 24 here, and it's also going to be closed off with a chain on some bollards and a couple of planters, just so that it's very clear that this is not site access, except for those very few times when, when maneuverability around this portion of the site is important. In addition, I was talking about the sightlines, you know, these changes allow us to pull landscaping back. The, the zoning standard is to have 25 feet clear of obstruction. These shrubs are generally low, but they're, they're potential as they mature to, to become obstructive, and so, so they are now much further back from the road. Really, the only issue with sightline is one existing tree, which is located on the property right here. It's a mature tree, 36, maybe more inches wide. And, you know, it, it is close to the sightline in this direction from this location. But that said, if that's the only real obstruction, I would sure hate to have to take down a mature street tree in order to make the, the site plan fly. And now, checking my notes to see if there was anything else that I was, wanted to be certain to highlight, and nothing is. Oh, and then the, the final piece was the Hatfield question. So again, the, the town line runs through in this location. There was one question brought up last time, that this is marked as an approximate town line, and, and why would we be showing that on a survey? And so I talked to the surveyor just, just for information, although it's going to become moot in a moment. There is what's called a roadstone at this location, which is not an official part of monumenting where the town line is. The only official monuments occur at the corners, which is a couple thousand feet in to the right, and about 9,000 feet to the left. And so the effort involved with surveying the exact location of this line is quite significant. With the demolition of these buildings, you know, even with that approximate being plus or minus, at worst, a couple of feet, the building is clearly on the weighty side of the line. And then all of that said, we've had some back and forth with the Hatfield Planning Board. They are going to consider the question as to whether this project, in terms of what needs to be built in Hatfield, can be allowed with special permit as the conversion of a nonconforming use. And so we, we got confirmation of that, about that in the last day or two, so we are going to be proceeding with an application to Hatfield on their side. And, and we're under the impression right now that until that permit is granted, that the, the site plan that you see before you is not, can't, can't be built. I'd have to answer any questions about that, or anything else that we were talking about last time.
So we should continue until you hear from Hatfield?
I wouldn't, so I, I think I, I, I put it as a chicken and an egg question. I see this as the same as when a planning board and a ZBA and a conservation commission all need to approve a project, is we need all of those permits to build. I would suggest a condition that a building permit not be issued until such time as, as Hatfield has approved a special permit on their side, if you want some assurance that that the project's not going to move forward. But you, you, of course, are empowered to make your own decision on that.
So you're effectively saying that if they disapprove, there's nothing you can do to amend it? Because the, if, if you were going to change it as a result of their disapproval.
Because if we want to, we would have to amend the site plan if we were going to change it.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be silly for us to approve it.
I guess I would like to hear what Jared has to say, because that's sort of a, a risk benefit decision, because it means that, that we may have to wait for the next planning board meeting to make everything official. But it would, we'll leave that open as the opportunity to amend the plan if Hatfield disapproves.
Because if you amend it, you will need to go back through advertising again and everything.
Right, yeah, I, and I hadn't thought about it that way. I think we're relatively confident that Hatfield is, is thinking favorably about this project. The question was really whether they could approve it or not, which was a black and white question. But again, is, is Jared on? Yeah, so I'll leave it to you. The question is, would we prefer that they vote on this site plan as is, and run the risk that if Hatfield disapproves, that we would have to then come back and re-advertise and reopen a public hearing to amend it?
And, and just a little bit of education for me here. Does, is there any interplay with the site plan that's approved with the special permit? If the site plan is this one, and it is also approved by ZBA, would we have to go back to ZBA as well as back to the planning board if the site plan were to change?
I think that what we did with the growth facility, we, we approved an amendment or a change to it. I think we could possibly do that.
Well, it depends, Lee. If it's a significant change, we would have to re-advertise. Well, even there, we would have to.
This would be significant enough that, that it would need to be reopened.
Do or don't think so?
I would, given that we'd have to move a driveway cut, and, and there's a question as to how much we could access the bottom side.
Yeah, I think, and you're changing a significant part of the available acreage.
Yeah, I, I had forgotten about the private cut.
It makes it very challengeable.
Yeah. If, if Hatfield, if Hatfield doesn't, doesn't approve as well. I, I guess I'm, I'm feeling optimistic, and so I'd like to proceed with this, and we, you know, with full knowledge, take the risk that Hatfield may not approve.
And therefore, we would have to reopen the hearing and do all that.
Yep.
Okay.
But they're probably talking, reapplying for the special permit, too.
Right.
Potentially.
Yes, sir.
Could I just ask, Chris, what the date of publication of this set of plans is with the changes on them?
Today.
Today, okay.
Yeah, that, that's, they're dated July 27th.
Thank you.
Any more questions? So we, do we have any conditions on this? At this point?
I can't think of any.
Well, I think we have to condition Hatfield's approval.
Right, that was going to be my next.
I mean, the, the normal conditions of, of the other town boards, and, and I think in this case, because there's so many ZBA issues. Specifically, the ZBA and.
Yeah, I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to bring that up. Maybe this is a, a case that calls for that. So, let me just, give me, everyone, give me one quick second.
And of course, we're fine with a condition requiring ZBA approval, we need that anyway to get a moving permit.
We understand.
Do.
It, it just helps when we do our, you know, to the back to the building inspector and then all, you know.
I was at a meeting last summer where the building inspector came up, I totally understand.
All right, so I'm sharing my screen, so assuming I'll fill in all the right details for applicant's and parcel ID. We're saying this was our boilerplate, must receive approvals from all appropriate boards and committees. But I guess you're not, well, you might be doing construction, right?
I think you could take that one out.
Okay, that's fine. All right, and so the next condition, can we, somebody give me wording, notional wording?
Being able to take action if there's an odor issue? Do we have standard language for that?
Oh, we can, I can, so I can put in the odor mitigation language, I'll dig that up in just a second. Let's, what's the language for conditioning on Hatfield approval?
Must approve, must acquire approval from Hatfield, receive approval.
From, from the Hatfield CBA.
ZBA.
It's entirely a planning board process over there.
Oh, okay. That's right, the permit and site plan.
Everybody's different.
What zoning, zoning approval must be received.
Zoning approval, okay. Field. Okay, and then, just give me one quick second, I'll look up what we did for Seven River Road on our site plan conditions. On odor, so what we said there was all right, so I'm copying.
That one is cultivation, that might be. Well.
Well, let me, let me at least share, share the language, I'm just copying it. I'm pasting it here so you can see it. So this was the language from the Seven River Road approval.
I think that's so good.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good boilerplate.
I imagine we've accepted it before, so we'd accept it again.
You did accept it before.
Yeah, because we, we worked on that language quite a bit.
Really, it's what you call artisanal planning board condition language.
He spoke.
They're such a nerd.
We wouldn't be getting slap capped.
Well, my wife is holding my dinner, so I'd like to
Well.
All do expeditious consideration.
All right, feels the same.
All right, so any other conditions? All right, then I will move that these be the condition, that these three conditions be those for the a site plan approval.
I'll second.
All right.
I was here for this, so. Don, yes. Tom?
Yes.
You didn't close the public hearing, I think.
Oh.
Thank you, Chris.
You want to be on the planning board, Chris?
No.
He is, he's been.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, the.
All are, there were some other public, but the public has gone. Their dinners were ready.
I don't think they were for this.
Bert, isn't Bernie close by? Anyway, Bernie's gone again.
Okay, the public hearing is, is closed. So, we have conditions, and we are not going to vote on whether we accept those conditions.
I move approval of the site plan with these conditions.
Seconded.
Right, okay. Roll call vote, Don, yes. Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Hey, the motion is approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Who seconded?
I don't think we've got anything else under other, do we?
Mary needs to know who seconded that last motion.
Everybody. Make somebody up.
Brett did, I heard him.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I did. So I, I got this document in our OneDrive. Site plan conditions.
Okay, do I have a motion to? Get the heck out of here and eat?
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. We look forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, have fun, have fun right there.
Thank you, everybody.
Next to Toraverty, I'm sure you're gonna, it's gonna be a great time for.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.